Speaker, will please call the role on this. I think we'll have it official.
Alderman Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Police?
Yes.
Alderman Lewitin?
Yes.
Alderman Shaki?
Yes.
Alderman Cadala?
Yes.
Alderman Winger?
Yes.
Alderman Coles?
I'll say yes.
Alderman Knight?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. Mr. Douthwaite, did you want to say something?
Before you make a motion to adjourn, I understand that the council can sometimes get a little bit nervous about projects that are a little bit over budget. And I just want to take a minute or two to share with the rest of the aldermen, a conversation I had with Alderman Police and Alderman Cadala a couple of months ago. In the Chicago Tribune this week, there was an article about the perilous finances of the city of Chicago. You may have seen that. And one of the concerns that has been raised about Chicago's financial position is the lack of an adequate reserve. And there was a comment in there from the Governmental Finance Officers Association, GFOA. GFOA recommends that a city's reserve should be somewhere between 5% and 15% of operating expenses to guard against an economic downturn, to have adequate cash flow, or to be able to supplement projects like we talked about tonight. 5% to 15%. At the end of 2007, the city of Wooddale had $8.9 million in unrestricted reserve and expenditures of $8.6 million. Over 100% of our annual expenditures. The reason I'm telling you that is that if you get nervous once in a while because a project bumps from $1,200,000 to $1,400,000, we've got more than adequate reserve money to draw against to cushion ourselves from those kind of contingencies. So, you know, I just want to put it in perspective. This, I've worked in seven different cities as a city manager, and this is the healthiest city financially in that regard that I've ever worked in. You guys are in great shape. We want to keep it that way. If you asked me what my preferred minimum reserve level would be, it'd probably be 25%, 30%, and ideally it'd be 50% or 60%. To have 100% of the annual expenditure sitting in the bank is highly unusual and very attractive when it comes to looking for a bond rating. So just to put things in perspective, you're not as bad off as you think you might be.
I appreciate what you said, and I especially like the part about being 100%, which means we're about a year. And that's wonderful, especially when you read about the other towns having budget difficulties. I'd just like to keep it up there, close to that 100%, not necessarily at 100%, but not go all the way down to what they suggest of what...
5% to 15%?
15, yeah, that's, I don't want to go anywhere near that amount.
That's a little thin on my part as well.
Right. So we do have it, as you say, but we'll try and keep it pretty close to that. Items to be considered at future meetings, a commercial and recreational vehicle parking and storage ordinance. Has that gone through the zoning and planning board?
It's my understanding it's on the October 20th agenda.
Okay, so we can consider this for some time, perhaps in December?
I would think so, yes. Or sooner.
There's no hurry. Is there anything else? Alderman Wesley?
I would like to update on the duplication hearings that goes on here on if we break even, losing money on it or not. That was a six-month trial that we passed to try to find out when we prosecute in-house and attorney comes here. I want to know what the cost is that going? Are we making money with all the tickets? Or are we losing money with the attorney or all that? I would like to update on that. Thank you.
That would be, I think, under your committee anyway, so you'll get to that next. Is it? Okay. Actually, I'd like to see that under Finance and Administration. Anything else? If not, may I have a motion to adjourn? So moved. May I have a second? All in favor? Motion carries. Thank you.
Finance. Call the Finance Committee order. Make the minute-taker note that all people are still present, but Mr. Lewitin has arrived. I need a motion to prove a minutes for October 2nd, 2008. All in favor? Motion carries. In your packet, you guys received a water rate thing that we've been kicking around for a while. I did have a meeting with Brad about this. I did meet with, I did talk to Wally. I was kind of confused with this whole thing. Same thing with the city manager. But what I like to do is I like to give staff a direction, which way we want to go. Are we happy with the step and all that? Because he needs to go back and redo this and bring it down to our level a little bit. Because I'll tell you, I was totally confused with that. And even Finance, even the chairman was a little confused in the city manager. So I think Brad here, if I'm mistaken, you're looking for directions on which way to go. Am I correct?
That is correct, Mr. Chairman. You know, specifically, I know originally the intent of the structure that Ms. Powers and I presented was to do conservation on the water side and then the capped sewer rate. Both of those at committee a couple of months ago were tabled back to this committee. So at this point, I'm not sure if you still want us to proceed with the tiered water structure to promote conservation or to encourage conservation, or if you want to go for more of an approach like we have now, where it's the same for every drop of water used, whether it be one gallon or a million gallons. Same thing on the sewer side. Do you want a cap? Do you want tiers? Or do you want it to be the same as we currently have it? Where it's the same for every drop of water, whether it's one gallon or a million gallons?
Okay. Mr. Coles, go ahead.
I thought we picked, we had five tiers. And I thought we picked one. And why don't we work on that one? Why don't we pick one and let him work on one? Every time he throws us four or five, all the numbers get confused. And if he picks one and makes one look, and then we'll go from there. And I think that's a good idea. I think that's a good idea. Otherwise, we see all these numbers and it jumps from $53 to $77 to $103, and you actually get confused. And let him pick, you're already head of the finance department. You pick one tier, or we pick one tier, and you work on that one tier and come up with that, and then we can go from there. And that would be a better way of doing it than this way. This way here, all we do is get these papers with all these numbers on, and by the time you shuffle the papers around, you forget what you read before. So why don't we, why don't we pick one tier and let him work on one tier? He knows what the tiers were. And let him work out if we pick three, or we pick four, or we pick five. Let him work on that and compare that to, with only one tier, like the first tier, like what you have right now, and how it compares. It'd be a lot better that way than what we're doing right now.
Okay, let me get some other questions. Alderman Shark?
The idea originally was not to penalize anybody for using water. The average person uses, I believe, about 500 gallons a month, if I remember what Maggie said. Is that correct?
The national average now is currently, for a long time, we were saying 3,000 gallons per month per person. Now with some of the new low-flow devices in homes, the national average is trending downwards, closer to 2,500 a month. But we're still any using 3,000 as our benchmark downstairs.
25,000 gallons, or 2,500 gallons per month?
Between 2,500 and 3,000 gallons.
So we're talking about a household of four using about 10,000 gallons?
Yeah, between 10 and 12.
Approximately. Okay, so that's our first step, if I'm not mistaken, isn't it?
The original rate structure that we presented, the first tier was from 0 to 7,000 gallons. Then there was a tier from 7,000 to 10,000, a tier from 10 to 20,000, a tier from 20,000 to 50,000, and then the quote-unquote "super user" above 50,000.
Okay, maybe the council would feel better about making that average, that total average of 10,000, the first tier. And what I want to say is that the differences between the tiers is not an excessive amount. If they'd be between the first tier and the second tier, if they went into the full second tier, the amount difference in water with the tiers was only less than $3 for a month's supply of water. So it wasn't a great amount. We weren't trying to penalize people just to encourage people to save water because the amount of water that is accessible for drinking in the world is only 1% of the total amount of water that's out there. So we're being cut back by the county. We're being charged an extra 15% every year increase by the county. And what I was looking for is a way to encourage some conservation, not penalize people. So if you want, if the council would like to agree that the first tier be 10,000, which is the national average, and then a second tier and third and fourth, whatever it may be, but I still would like to see that tier. I'd like to see that where the second, if they go beyond that first amount, that they're going to pay a few cents more. And it's not going to break anybody's pocketbook, but it's going to encourage people to say to their kids and to themselves, turn off that faucet when I'm brushing my teeth. It just isn't necessary to keep that water running type of thing. So I don't know what the others would like, but I'd be willing to go back up to a 10,000-gallon first tier and then go from that point on, if that would make everybody more comfortable.
Alderman Police?
Brad, I think the intention you guys have here is making that fund self-sufficient. Right now, up until now, that thing is, even in this year's budget, it's going to lose almost $200,000. And I think the council, five years ago, even before I got on you, they started, every September, I think, it's been stepping up or whatever. And what kind of made us nervous is when we got those last numbers, we were going from 180,000 negative to the following year, 900,000 plus. I think we need to find a happy medium. I think the way you guys were working it out with the step and just a flat fee was very simple and easy for the residents to understand instead of some of these numbers. I understand, you know, when we were doing that, like Dan was saying, you know, the difference between the guy in the 10,000 bracket to the 15,000 bracket was really, he was only paying an extra $3 or $4. But those numbers start to get confused, and when people get confused, they start to get upset. If we could keep it simple like we have it now, I think the people will be a lot happier.
Mr. Cadala?
You know, I feel the same way as Alderman Police. I agree with what Alderman Shaki is saying and trying to push for, you know, using less water, conservation, so forth. But the goal is to make this self-sustaining, and I think Nunezio is right. I mean, you know, people do get angry when they get confused. They think you're targeting them if they're in the 10,000 or more bracket. You know, I can go either way on this, guys. I mean, I could live with a tier. I prefer no tier. But we've already, I think, this committee's already gone beyond a point where there's no tier. I think that's been discussed, and the majority like the tiering. And I'm okay with that. I just, I do, if there is going to be a tier, I just want to simplify it, and I don't want the city to make all kinds of extra money on it. Want to make enough to sustain. I want to make enough to handle any additional future costs. I just, you know, I don't want that much of a reserve, you know, pulled out of the pockets of our constituents. I don't think it's right.
Christine Winger?
Thank you. I would like to recognize what Brad had requested, and perhaps if we can just take a vote on if we should continue looking at the tiered system or if we're going to go back to our standard way of doing this, or maybe we have sewer and water go up at the same, like proportions, but it just wouldn't be a tiered system. So I'd like to see us at least give that amount of direction because I look at all the work that has taken place, and it's a lot of work. So I'd like to give a crisp direction on at least what we're looking at because I'm hearing that some aldermen are looking at more of a simplified approach versus the tiered now. So if we can accomplish that and then look more at the detail.
Okay, let me, I know Mr. Lewitin has a question, so we could come back to that.
My statement is, do you hear that, Mr. Cadala? He is saying, and Mr. Nunezio, where we're going from a deficit to a surplus for a year, and this amount is a million dollars swing. This is an enterprise system, and the profits, quote-unquote "profits", are really infrastructure building blocks, the money to pay for it. We had a report about six months ago that said that we had to have infrastructure, and that was one of the points that the report gave regarding the TIF study. And we have done some studies of our own and some analysis, and we know that there is going to need to be, in the next few years, a major overhaul of the sewer, of the water system, excuse me, not sewer, the water distribution system. A lot of the pipes are going to need to be replaced, and we're going to have to go out and borrow money and issue bonds in order to pay for them. And anybody who's going to buy these bonds is going to want to see the ability to repay them. So this shift from a deficit of $190,000 to a profit of $800,000 is not a profit because that profit is going to be eaten up very quickly, and we do have a serious problem with delivering water. It's just not reached the point where it's serious enough to want to look at and gawk at. It's just a problem that's slowly coming to fruition. So amassing the money is not an attempt to build up a giant surplus that won't be used. It's to build up a surplus that will allow us to make those capital improvements in the future. So I see no problem with the achievement of a reserve. And then I would answer, Dan, you're absolutely right. It doesn't matter if we have four or five tiers. The idea is to have a low tier to reward people who are truly conservative, and that would mostly benefit older people who are two people in a house who use very little water and rely on God to water the grass with rain. So I support your decision, Dan, to go either way. Thank you for listening to me.
Okay. Brad, you have a follow-up?
Just real quick, a couple of points to follow up on Alderman Lewitin. You know, as I mentioned earlier, you know, the $1.2 million that's now in the Capital Projects Fund for Water and Sewer Main Replacement, by definition of this being an enterprise fund, should be coming out of that fund. Additionally, should you get to the point where you do begin to replace water mains in a certain section of town that happens to be at Prospect and Irving Park, and you do issue bonds, you're going to have to be able to show the Bond Council and the other agencies the ability to pay for these bonds through the revenue stream in this fund. But at the same time, you're going to have to put the price point where you can pay for the debt service, you can pay the principal and interest on these bonds, while still maintaining the fund and continuing to do the infrastructure needs of the city. So right now, we're looking at, okay, we have to replace water mains every year on streets so we reconstruct. But as we start to get into different things, such as a sewer treatment plant or replacement of mains in certain parts of town, you know, big, huge projects, you're going to have to set the price point so you can pay for any bonds that you issue out of this fund, as well as continue to perform general maintenance as well as replacement of these lines to keep the infrastructure as current as possible. So while I do agree with Alderman Cadala that we don't just want to wrongly, or, you know, just kind of get greedy and just start trying to, a money grab here, if you will. You know, this isn't just a one-year problem or a one-year fix. Four or five years down the road, you incur a $10, $15, $20 million problem, and you're still chugging along at half a million a year. Then you have a significant problem because your rates are going to have to go up astronomical to accommodate that. So you have to balance what's best for the constituency today and tomorrow and also five, 10 years down the road, which I understand isn't easy, which is why I appreciate you all having this dialogue right now so that we can try to come to an amicable solution for all involved.
Christine Winger?
Thank you. I do understand the concept, and I am glad you brought that up, of needing to show revenue to go out for bond issues and to be able to get bonding and that sort of thing. So I can understand that, and I do agree that there has to be some, you know, higher revenue in there flowing on a constant basis. But in response, Alderman Lewitin, I wanted to remind the council of when we went out for referendum a year ago, a year and a half ago, looking to increase sales tax, one of the strongest arguments that we need infrastructure support, we need money to fund infrastructure. This is infrastructure. Pipes are infrastructure. If we're putting money in this account to fund infrastructure, I am fine with that. That is the purpose of why we did this. That's why I went behind the referendum. And now to say, no, we're not going to put money in this account, I take exception to that. And we need to put some money from that referendum into the pipes, into this account. And let's remember that we moved the accounts together a couple of years ago, the infrastructure and the operating, into an enterprise fund. So before, they did act separately. Thank you.
I'm going to answer that question just so you know that we have put the money into that account that we had raised. We have not, take that one point, the tax referendum, we have not used that for anything else but structures, water and all that. We know that. We have done that. We had a major water main break that ended up paying for, that came out of that 1%. Any road projects we do with sewer and water, that 1% sales tax is coming out of that account. We are not, and I don't want anyone to think that we are taking that money and spending it anywhere else in the city. We are putting it back in the sewer. We are putting it back in the water main. We are doing that. Sidewalks, we've been doing that. We have not took that sales tax money and used it anyplace else. I don't know where we're coming from that. I don't know where that's coming from. Several people told me that, too. We have put it back into the ground. So don't go saying that we haven't, because we have.
What I'm saying, when I hear conversations up here about how this fund should be operating on its own and self-supporting, I understand that an enterprise fund can do that and should do that, but when we have capital projects in there and we're hesitating to use outside sources to do these pipes, that's what I don't like to hear. That if we need to fund this with referendum money, I am fine with that. But I'm hearing conversations up here that this has to be self-sufficient, and we need to charge the residents, you know, to cover pipes and that sort of thing, all of the pipes. And I don't agree with that. And I'm not saying that you're saying that, Alderman Wesley, but that's what I'm hearing on a portion of the council.
First of all, we didn't talk about flowing bonds for any projects at all. So I don't know where that conversation is coming from. Our conversation tonight is give staff direction, which area are we going to go? We need to get this done at reasonable time right now, guys. Okay. Mr. Knight, do you have anything to say? I'm going to go one more time here, and then we're going to make a decision, give them direction, because I'm about ready to table this now until we... He asked me, I was ready to table this tonight, but he asked me to give him some direction. That's the only reason why this conversation is going on. Mr. Cadala?
Question to staff. Are we trying to show a positive of approximately 800,000 a year? I mean, is that the goal? Is that staff's recommendation? Is that a legitimate, reasonable number? Because you're talking to a guy that doesn't know the right answer to that. So is that the reasonable goal? And whether it's 800 this year, 600 next year, whatever it is, is that the kind of monies that we're looking for to be able to do exactly what you said and be bondable in the future when something should come up unexpectedly?
I don't have a magic number to give everybody here tonight. I know when we went through the first time around, the $1.2 million swing threw quite a few people as being too aggressive, I guess, if you will. And so the, albeit probably not as clear as I should have been in this packet, and I do apologize for the abundance of information in here. I tried to get the number for the first year, the revenue for that fund or the fund balance up around half a million dollars, which would have been a $700,000 swing, which is better than $1.2 million. At the same time, I was trying to also build these models to get us to the same point at the end of 2012 where we were originally with Ms. Powers. So my goal was to get it about half, give or take, of what the original numbers were based upon what I had heard back from the council after the meetings of the first go-around, but still try to find a way to get us close to the same endpoint. Because I did speak with Manager Douthwaite, and he agreed to dial it back some the first year or two, and correct me if I'm wrong here, but still to try to get us to the same point at the end so that we weren't playing catch-up and have to be here and have large jumps in another four or five years, so.
Mr. Police?
Got a couple of questions. Brad? If we stay with the same basic structure we have now, I'm sure you can come up with the fee that would turn this fund around where it will be making some money in the future, correct? Okay. And I know where Alderman Winger is going because I feel the same way. I mean, we haven't spent any money, you know, from the 1% tax. That money should continue to go into this fund also because, let's face it, even though we turned this fund around and we start making, let's say, we go from negative 200 to positive 200 the first year, and maybe to positive 350 the second year. That 200,000 plus the $1 million should be added because if I remember right, looking at the bills, and we did that collapse pipe over by Georgetown underneath electrical wires, that little stretch was about 70 grand. That area is the area that most of the aldermen are probably concerned about, and we're probably going to get a lot of those stretches of 70 grand coming up. And we're still going to need that 1% referendum to continue to do these jobs. I just don't want to see us blast the residents right away, right here, this first year because we want to go from 200,000 and make it a million dollars. We should grad... The council previous was gradually getting to where it's making money. This council should not be the one that's going to say, let's get it all the first year, then we'll have a million dollars in the fund plus the million-dollar referendum, now we got $2 million with the projects. It's not the way we should gradually move this forward.
Mr. Coles?
I got one thing to say. There's a town that just put a surcharge on every water bill for businesses at $235.